We're gonna start with the Board of Adjustment Hearing. So Chair Ledyard is unavailable this evening, so Vice Chair Trunetski, you would be acting in his place. To your point, you do have the discretion to ask Board Member Dudley if she would like to run the meeting?
That would probably be better from, from the audio standpoint getter.
Board Member Dudley, how do you feel?
Please hold on my parliamentary procedure, because I have not run a meeting before. Are we ready to go then? Yeah, please, I was just using my phone, but that'd be great.
With the packet.
Thank you. Alright, so we're ready to call to order?
Bang the gavel and save the time and we'll go.
Or of adjustment, okay. Alright, so we will pledge allegiance. Please, please rise and join me. Great, thank you. Okay, so the first item of business is the approval of minutes. If I am running the meeting, do I not make motions?
Acting Chair, there isn't a need for you to defer that to another board member, you can make.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes and at a second. So all in favor? Any opposed? Say nay. Moving on, first item of business, Pathway Solid Wall PZ 2560. Randy, can you?
Thank you, Acting Chair. So this is item three B, this is a request for solid wall, it's case PZ 2560, the applicant is Kate Oliver. Sitting to your right, my left. This is a variance request for a property of five ten North Old Litchfield Road, specifically from section thirty dot O two dot B dot two of the zoning code, which I'll explain in more detail. The zoning is residential state, and this is a request to construct a future solid wall along the pathway, which is along the rear property line. This is a variance from the requirements of the zoning code, which only permits view fencing adjacent to golf courses, parks, or trails. On the screen, Vice Chair and Board Member, I know this is gonna be difficult to see from the small camera at the far end of the room, but what we're looking at is a view looking east from the cul-de-sac at Yano. Looking at the rear yards, which are very hard to see because there's less vegetation. The request was essentially wall in their rear yard space. Look from the aerial, this was included within your packet, there is a wall in place now. However, that wall is setback significantly from the rear property line. They would look to essentially add a wall, replace the wall along the property line for the full use of their enjoyment within their yard. There are four criteria in which the state justifies or does not allow justification of variances. The city then adopts those same four criteria, I will read for you. That there are special circumstances or conditions applying to the land building or use referred to in the application, which do not apply to other properties in the district. Two, the such special circumstances were not created by the owner or applicant. Three, that the authorizing, excuse me, of the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights. Four, that the authorizing of application will not materially detrimental to persons residing or working in the vicinity, to adjacent property, or to the neighborhood, or public welfare in general. How we analyze this and would present this to you is by no fault of the property owner, we imposed a restriction on solid walls on the pathway in two thousand and seven. That is something that, there's a point in time in which you could or could not do this sort of thing. So now, since two thousand and seven, these sorts of requests have to go through the Board of Adjustment for a variance request. We last held a similar meeting for five one four North Old Litchfield Road in September of last year, believe it or not. And that, at the time, the Board of Adjustment did grant that approval. Now, just as a reminder, this hearing is not subject to any conditions, or restrictions, or motions, or exhibits. This is a modification of the requirements of the zoning code. Should this proceed, we can talk about the specificities of the future construction during the Design Review Board meeting. So with that being stated, we would move to approve a proposed variance file, PZ twenty five sixty. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this proposal.
Does anybody have any questions on the phone? Okay, if the applicant would like to say anything?
No, up to you.
This is very similar to the one we approved already.
Vice Chair, the last one we approved is five one four North Old Litchfield, this is five one zero, so two houses south.
The circumstances are the same.
Yes, that's correct.
It's the same, basically the same pathway.
Yes, that's correct, the same location as last year when we had this previous Board of Adjustment meeting.
Okay, alright, thanks. Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure this is such a similar situation. And then, I think the only thing, just to make sure there's some sort of continuity in this, the height. And make sure that it's presentable on the pathway side.
So Chair, we will go into the specifics during the Designer Review Board meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so if there is no more further discussion, I guess I can make a motion. I will, I'll make a motion that we approve the Pathway Solid Wall Package, PZ twenty five sixty at five ten North Old Litchfield Road.
I will second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? And carries, moving on to the next one.
If you could, before you leave, before you go, we're gonna talk about your neighbor, real quick during the Board of Adjustment meeting.
That's fine.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna switch and have a Design Review Board meeting. That's gonna talk about the wall, the gates, and all that sort of stuff. That's right, yes, just hang tight if you could.
Okay, well, so moving on to item C, the Pathway Solid Wall, Randy, do you have a presentation for this one?
Yes, Acting Chair, I have a very similar presentation, this is not deja vu, but we'd like to restate for the record. This is case PZ twenty five sixty two, Kate Oliver, the applicant. This is at five twelve North Old Litchfield Road for a variance request from section thirty dot O two dot B dot two of the zoning code. And this would be a variance to allow a solid wall, future solid wall. You're not approving the actual design or anything during the Board of Adjustment, hearing just the modification of the requirement of the zoning code. Specifically, which requires solid walls on the, does not allow solid walls on the pathways, excuse me. The depictions are very similar in nature, as the street view off Yano provides few sheds into both yards. And this again is one house north at five twelve. The, there is no wall in this situation for this house, so this would be a new wall being constructed on the property line of the rear. There are four criteria in which the variance can be approved per state law and per Litchfield Park Zoning Code. We do feel as though this request does not grant any sort of additional allowances that are not enjoyed by other properties. All properties along the pathway, except for one, essentially already have a solid wall, which allows them the full use and enjoyment of their rear yards and a contained space. So this is something that would actually be aligned with the rest of the neighbors, instead of granting something that is not. So we will move to approve the proposed variance filed, PZ twenty five sixty two. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, the applicant like to, to say anything? For the record, that's a no, I guess. Okay, so I guess, is there any other discussion? Again, I, just for ease, I guess, I would make a motion that we approve the, the Pathway Solid Wall, PZ twenty five sixty two variance for a future wall along four twelve North Old Litchfield Road.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, okay, so all, all in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay? Okay, motion carries. And I believe that includes the Board of Adjustment?
Acting Chair, if there is no further business, if you would like to move on to item four, which is an adjournment, and
Do I have to have a motion for that? Have a second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Say nay? Close the meeting, do I need to hit the gavel again to call to order the meeting?
You do, Chair, Chair Trunetski for the Designer Review Board, would you like to defer to Board Member Dudley to act as chair for this next meeting?
Yes, I think because I don't have good visuals from my little iPhone, so.
Thank you, Acting Chair, you may proceed as you wish, and at your discretion, we can skip item two.
Yes, okay. Alright, called to order the design, Special Design Review Board meeting. We will defer the Pledge of Allegiance, because we've already done it. So number three is call to the community, if there's anybody, is there anybody who has expressed a desire to address the board?
Acting Chair, we do not have any requests to speak this evening on non-agenda items.
Alright, that negates item number four as well then, I assume. Alright, so on to business, approval of minutes, discussion and possible action to approve the June fifth regular meeting minutes?
And Acting Chair, just to, sorry, just to clarify.
Could we move to the following meeting?
I'm sorry, was that a motion to, to move that to the next meeting? Table it to the next meeting?
Table it to the next meeting?
Okay, so that's a motion? Okay, so all in favor to table the approval of minutes to the next meeting, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Any opposed, say nay? Great, so we will table that one? Alright, so on to Pathway Solid Wall. Randy?
Acting Chair, thank you, this is item five B, Pathway Solid Wall, we'd like to keep these application names the same, just to confuse you. It's PZ twenty five sixty one, Kate Oliver, the applicant, Tim, the owner, at five ten North Old Litchfield Road. This is a request to add a solid wall with gate on the rear property line. The zoning is residential state, and this request would add a solid, stuccoed, painted wall along a rear property line. That's adjacent to the pathway with a pedestrian access gate. Here's a depiction of how that would look, it is along that rear property line, you can see in blue. Almost got it, there we go. An orange, about two thirds of the way down would be the gate to access and enjoy the pathway system. Here's a look at the rendering, you see just, no, solid wall, past columns, every necessary amount of feet in between, so it doesn't fall down, and that pedestrian gate. You will note, there is an area that has been redacted, there was a request that was not able to be granted for an RV gate along the south side of the rear yard, which would only be accessible by the pathway. Now, as far as the request goes, this is within section thirty of the zoning code regarding walls landscaping. The requirements have been outlined and are being met, being painted and stuccoed on not only the outside, but also the inside of this property, and the gate as well meets our designer review criteria. We have not received any public comments to this proposal, however, I will tell you that this project is being treated as one with the adjacent property, so that the improvements will be done harmoniously and tie in together in one large project. With that, we would move to approve the proposed wall, it's filed, PZ twenty five sixty one, at five ten North Old Litchfield Road, subject to the exhibits provided in your packet, and stipulation one, which reads, a building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur on the wall. With that, if you have any answer any questions, the applicant and owner are here to answer any questions as well.
Okay, so you mentioned it is to be painted and finished and stuccoed, it'll be six foot CMU block, or is there a it looks like there's a detail for a wrought iron fence, but that's, that is only the gate, is that right, the pedestrian gate?
If you could go up to the, the mic.
Could you, I'm sorry, just for the record, could you, say your name?
I'm Tim Smith, the property owner. Madam Chair, when was the gate disapproved?
The RV gate, are you?
It's not gonna be an RV gate, but the gate, yeah.
I, I don't think the gate.
So Acting Chair, just to answer the question Kate had asked, and to answer your question as well. I apologize if Kate had not showed the information with you. So when this was reviewed internally by planning, engineering, and building, all three departments threw up a red flag for an RV gate located on the rear property line that is adjacent to the pathway. It caused us a bit of concern to think what the intent would be, and we had concerns that there may be an opportunity to basically cut through the pathway in order to access the rear yard. So is, in our motion, but certainly open for your interpretation and discussion, to not include that as part of our motion, but be happy to entertain a response to that.
Yeah, I think it was misinterpreted, it's not gonna be for an RV gate, right in the corner, for one thing, this is just one thing. On this side of the fence is an APS transformer, and we have an underground power line that runs right across to our property, and in the last, say fifteen years ago, we've had APS have to come in and redo part of that line. And it would be better if we had an access point for them to get into the property. Also, I'm thinking about doing some big trees landscaping, and I'd like to be able to bring some big trees in, which wouldn't fit through the gate, that would need an access point in order to do that. So Sharon, Susan knows that at one point, we were talking about bringing an RV in there, and making an RV building, and the whole thing, that we'd be coming in off of Litchfield, Old Litchfield Road. We're not gonna do that, and the gate is not for an RV, or for a vehicle, whole vehicles in there, is to have access to the property. Similar to the property just to the south, they have the same type of gate right next to us. So it would be a similar, similar to their, their.
So just for the benefit of those on the phone, Kate has an example image of the adjacent property, since you all can't see it on the phone, I don't know, it's fine, but I don't want to, since we all can't see it, I don't wanna include it as part of this, just to clarify that. And then
I wasn't aware of this change either, I wasn't notified, there was a change.
What is the, what is the width of the gate that is being requested?
It was twelve feet width, correct?
I believe so.
We certainly can, yes.
And Susan, it would match the pedestrian gate as well.
Do like a double by either six or eight feet?
Chair, I'm sorry to say that Chair, if you had recently moved where you were standing, everything that you just stated did not come through, unfortunately. I don't know if you're able to go back to a previous location in which you may have been standing or sitting, but where you're currently at came across very garbled.
I, I do not know.
I have a hard enough time hearing with the acoustics in here to begin with.
Yeah, yeah. She's back? Chair, Trunetski, are you back on with us?
I'm, I'm not seeing her from my side.
Sorry about that, I don't know why, it just, it just cut out. Can you hear me?
Yes, and if you could repeat everything you said, I'm sorry.
What I was thinking is that to allow access, you could do a six or eight foot wide double gate that will allow access for maintenance and stuff, but would not allow vehicular traffic through.
Okay.
I would assume so, that'd be fine.
So just to clarify and just make sure we have a motion that we're all gonna be harmonious about. The original request was for a twelve foot gate. Chair Trunetski has offered a six or an eight foot, do you have a preference on one of the others? Because I wanna make sure that we get it right when we make a motion here.
I'm sorry, yeah, do I need to make a motion?
No, I don't, I just wanna make sure that you're in agreement with
Yeah, eight foot is, is, would work.
So just, so we're on the same page?
Two four foot gates.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that would be also in addition to the pedestrian gate that, that is showing.
Yeah, so for Chair Trunetski and Board Member Derry, the, the discussion is regarding the location. The pedestrian gate proposed in the packet is not next to the access point in which the owner wishes to utilize. So just for the record, there would still be a four foot gate independent of the two four foot gates which are further south. Those being used for access for landscaping or maintenance for APSs, is there an agreement there?
Yes.
I have a question, why? If we're, if we're offering two four foot gates and along that fence line, why do we need to put another four foot gate in?
A double gate is really difficult to operate for, if you're just coming in and out as a pedestrian.
Plus I'm getting old.
They're, they're heavier, yeah, it's, it's better to have just a, what we call a man gate. And then the other one would just stay closed, and it's usually pegged to the ground, so it's, it's more of a hassle to open.
Okay, and so the, that would look just like the pedestrian gate?
I've talked to him about the design, it'll match.
Don't touch it, don't touch it, someone. Yes.
No.
Okay, so are there any?
So then, Acting Chair?
Yes.
I would recommend that we do the following. We have a recommendation myself, PZ twenty five sixty one, with one stipulation, a building permit issued by the city is required before any construction is to occur. I would openly offer, I don't wanna even say that with a positive or negative inflection. I would openly offer that we would need to add a stipulation that states that an additional eight foot opening through the use of two four foot gates would be permitted to supplement the application materials.
Okay, so is there, is there any more discussion on the phone, or are we ready to make a motion?
Yes, no, I'd like to ask, where these two fences join? When you move, and I forget exactly where it is, but about three years ago, they added a new fence upstream, and they paralleled the existing fence going east and west, and they left a great big gap along the trail. And I, I run my grand dog down there at least two to three times a week in September through May, and it just looks like a mess. So I would like to make sure that when you're building those fences, and for the two lots, that they put one common line on the lot line, and butt both back gates or back walls uptight, so it's neat, clean looking finish. And if you don't know where it is, just walk the path and look on that side, and the Litchfield Park roadside, and you'll see, or the old Litchfield Road, and you'll see where it is, and it collects junk, and it's just very somebody, somebody let the ball slip there.
Yeah, I, I agree on that one too, that was done at first because the other side had like a chain link fence, and it was not done at the same time, it does look kinda sloppy. And the other thing I would point out is that on the path side where we added the, where we allowed the other fence to be built, they never came back and fixed the pathway, they never fixed the landscape on the outside of the wall. So it, it was unfinished there, and I'd like to stipulate that both that that side of the wall gets cleaned up too, so it looks presentable from the pathway. And that's something we should have asked from the last one that we did.
Thank you both for the comments, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly. When the construction occurred on the private property, there was an impact to the city pathway property that maybe ruined the appeal or the aesthetic?
Yes.
Okay, and there was never any remedy or violation that occurred against the property owner for the impacts to city property?
Yeah, no, they should have been made to come back and, and clean it all up and fix, like at the stem wall and stuff like that, it was left unfinished.
Excellent, that is a great thing to hear. The good news for the owner who's in the audience is the code enforcement officer sitting right behind him. And so we can work together in order to make sure that during inspections, that our inspector also verifies any before and after changes that are a detriment to our city property.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify for the record, they're talking about the five fourteen, Old Litchfield, the one, yeah.
And also, could I ask what the materials of the gate are gonna be? I'm, I'm guessing it's gonna be a steel gate, and what are you gonna use for? You're gonna put boards in there, you're gonna make it a solid gate out of steel, what, what's the plan?
It's gonna be a solid steel gate, so the slots are steel as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I state your name for the record, I don't know if it's done that yet?
I'm Kate Oliver.
Okay, so any other questions or discussion on the phone?
Not here.
I'm happy.
Okay. Oh, yes, please.
This is Tim Smith again, I just wanted to make sure you did understand that the, the wall is gonna be solid across both properties. And there'll be no gap, it'll be one solid wall, and then Ben, Ben's gonna put a wall in between our properties. So it'll just come up against that solid wall. There won't be any visual, anything visual from the pathway.
Okay, and then, I guess, can you remind me then, on the neighbors on either side? Because I think that, that was where this, the one on 514 was an issue, that there was kind of some weird things that happened with the, the, so but, so you have.
There are lots too, we can just fill right.
It's gonna go right in, and then the other people.
Contiguous. Contiguous.
Contiguous, yeah.
Funny, where that's very similar.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, so would anybody like to make a motion, or, I mean, I have some notes of the people on the phone would like me to make. Okay, I will just make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I will make a motion that we approve the pathway solid wall package, PC 2516. As presented according to stipulations by the city, stipulation one, as listed in the packet, and the addition of a stipulation, the two, I'm sorry, two stipulations, that there would be a, an eight-foot double gate for access through the use of two four-foot gates. And then also that the stipulation would also be included that they must fix the pathway landscaping, any landscaping that's disturbed, and, you know, make the fence look finished, the stem wall, everything look finished at the end. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, so moving on to item C, Pathway Solid Wall at 512.
Yes, item five C is case PC 2563, the applicant Kate Oliver, owners for Ben and Brandy. This is at 512 North Old Litchfield Road, and it's a request to add a solid wall with gate on the rear property line, and some additional fence treatments along the front property line, I'll explain in more detail. The zoning is residential state, the request would add a solid stucco wall along the rear property lines to match up with adjacent properties at 514 and 510 on either side of them, to be contiguous. And similar situation, but some differences, there is a request to have a pedestrian gate on the rear property line, I'll show you on the subsequent slide as well. And there's some additional fence work being done, or wall work being done on the front of the property. In your packet, there was a nice colorful key, and I explained this in high detail, what is what and what is where. Again, the, the crux of the conversation is regarding the rear property wall. This is a situation, I know this has come up a few times, but I could finally say it, this is a situation where the interior walls do not need to go through the board for approval, just the outside city-facing, right-of-way-facing walls. Hence, the request for you this evening for the one along the pathway. The, this packet included a bit more of a site plan and exhibits instead of a render for what the block will look like in the fence as well. Now, we do feel as though these proposed improvements are harmonious with the existing architecture. It does meet the intentions of Section 30 of the code, which is regarding walls and landscaping. We have not received any public comments on this proposal, only that the adjacent neighbor is applying to add the same wall, and has recently been approved to construct said same wall, so this will join up on both sides. With that, we would move to approve the proposed wall, which includes one pedestrian gate, filed PC 2563 at 512 North Old Litchfield Road, subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant, and one stipulation, "A building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur." And we'd have to answer any questions, and the applicant is present.
Okay, does anybody on the phone have any questions?
The walls are gonna be, the ones that face the pathway are gonna be essentially the same.
Oh, is that, that's for the applicant, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
This is Kate Oliver. Yes, they're gonna be the exact same.
Okay, thank you.
And then, so I, I was looking ahead and I asked the question last time, I realize now, the wrought iron fence detail, that is for the front.
That's for the front, yeah. In between the houses.
And it's just, it looks like it's pretty, pretty standard.
Yes.
Um, is there any further discussion?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve a new solid wall on a pathway home located at 510 North Old Litchfield Road with the addition of the same stipulation that we, they must fix the pathway landscaping as in the previous application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And carries, so, all right, on to item D, Garage Purgalot, C 2567.
The Chair, thank you. I'm gonna stumble through this presentation because I may have incorrect data, but I'll look to the applicant to supplement my information when we get to him. This is item five D, it's PC 2567, the applicants Kate Oliver, the owners are Ben and Brandy. It's at 512 North Old Litchfield Road. The request is out to essentially add a lean-to pergola onto the guest home or RV garage or guest garage, I'm not exactly sure, but I'll look to the applicant when we get there to better explain it and its location. The zoning is RE, again, the request is to add a pergola with only two columns because the rear of the pergola would essentially use the existing structure to make that attachment point. Here's a very abbreviated look at what is being done. The good news is, there's existing, I guess you could call it arbor trellis breezeway, a connection point between the main house and the rear structure that is in, going to match in colors and materials, and have the same pitched estile roof as well. Our analysis is that this is a harmonious addition to the home as it is an attached structure. It does meet the intentions of Section 39 of the zoning code regarding design standards. We have not received any public comments on this proposal. We move to approve the proposed pergola filed PC 2567 at 512 North Old Litchfield Road, choose the typo, subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant, and one stipulation in which a building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. I would actually ask Chair, Acting Chair, that we have the applicant supplement my presentation to clarify any points I've made before opening to your questions.
Okay, any, any questions for Randy on the phone before we go on to the applicant?
No.
No.
Right, all right.
I'm Kate Oliver. So, sorry about my drawing ability. I'm not very good at that. I put it together faster than I expected. The, our design computer crashed, as you can tell. But it's gonna just match the structure right to the right of it there. The homeowner really likes the original look of the house. They just want to extend that look in front of their, their new pool that they're getting in there, and just basically have a little shaded area. It's nothing crazy, but it's just an aesthetic that they would like to add. And that is a guest quarters, I believe. I don't know exactly what it is, but I believe it's a guest quarters. I haven't been in there.
I know there was a driveway to it, so.
Yeah.
Used to be, it's.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions for that? It's, it's gonna be wood, and then a roof, so, yeah, just like a gazebo, but with tile on.
Does anybody on the phone have any questions? I guess one quick question, presumably the lot coverage is not even a question.
Chair, no, we have sufficient room for additional lot coverage in this lot.
Yeah, okay, so if anything, anybody has any discussion or questions on the phone?
No.
Okay. All right, if none, then I, I guess I will move that we approve the lean-to pergola at seven, I'm sorry, 512 North Old Litchfield Road. Subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant and stipulation one, as presented by the city.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carried. Okay, moving on to item six, Staff Report on Current Events.
Chair, as, or Acting Chair, Chair, Board Member Dudley, as we did meet last Thursday, I have nothing to add this evening.
Okay, are there any board member reports on current events?
No.
No.
All right, I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.
Thanks, Rachel.